Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Hello? Quiet. Take a seat, please. All right, today is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall Green Room. All stand for the pledge led by Dennis Donovan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna actually take a motion to add something to the agenda. So I would like to add Agenda Item 8A, the installation of the Flock ALPR Falcon sites. That'll be explained a little bit later by the chief when we get to that. Do I have a motion to add that?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Do we have any visitors here tonight that would like to address us? Okay. Item number three, so we are going to honor tonight Jerry Bud Vies. You know, he's been a member of this community for a very long time, whether it's being a business owner in town or part of sports. He's basically one of the fathers of this town, and we all have a very warm place in our heart for him. So we're gonna turn it over first to Michelle, who's gonna read something, the proclamation.
Mr. Vies, you wanna, can you come on up? Would you like to come on up?
I don't care.
Can you come up?
Sure.
Okay. So on behalf of the Town Council in the Town of Clinton, I am gonna present you with this proclamation. Whereas Gerald Bud Vies has recently celebrated his 96th birthday, whereas Bud Vies was honorably served our country in the Korean War, and whereas Bud Vies has been a member of the Clinton Volunteer Fire Department for 25 years, whereas Bud Vies served as the Town of Clinton's Civil Preparedness Director for 25 years, Bud Vies was proud, a proud business owner in Clinton for 30 years, and Bud Vies is a lifelong Clinton resident with five children, 10 grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren, and it is therefore, on behalf of the entire Clinton community, we sincerely thank Bud Vies from the bottom of our hearts and wish you and your family nothing but the best. So thank you, Gerald Bud Vies. And State Clerk Kristiana Scovitch also has a proclamation that she would like to come and present.
This is from the state of Connecticut, the General Assembly official citation, introduced by Representative Kristiana Scovitch, 35th District, and Senator Norm Needleman, 33rd District. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Gerald Bud Vies in recognition of your extraordinary contributions, tireless commitment, and outstanding service to the Clinton community. You have gained the admiration and respect of all the many people whose lives you have touched in so many ways, especially with the work you have done on behalf of our local veterans and our emergency services. We thank you for all you have done and wish you much continued success and happiness. The entire membership extends its best, very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success, given this 18th day of December, 2024, at the state Capitol, Hartford, Connecticut.
Moving on to item number four, we are going to give our appreciation to Wendy and June, the Register of Voters. They both know, I've said this to them before separately, you know, it's sometimes the Register of Voters is a thankless job, you know, you, you work and you're behind the scenes and you make sure everything moves smoothly, and, you know, the only time you ever hear anything is when people complain about this or that, and nobody ever really says thank you for all of your hard work. So we're here tonight, Michelle's gonna read a certificate of appreciation.
So if June will come on up first? So June, on an appreciation of your 24 years of service as the Register of Voters here in the Town of Clinton, we have a certificate of appreciation for you and some flowers, and thank you so much on behalf of the whole town for your years of service. Thank you. And also have some victorious...
You have the card?
I do.
I'll hold my compliments. We got all that.
You think it'll be a problem for me?
No. All right, this is from the state of Connecticut, the Connecticut General Assembly official citation, introduced by Representative Kristiana Scovitch, 35th District, and Senator Norm Needleman, 33rd District. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to June Hansen in recognition of serving as the Democrat Registrar of Voters for the Town of Clinton, your selfless dedication to the town and its citizens that help Clinton's government operate smoothly and efficiently. We are grateful for your many years of service and wish you much success and happiness upon retirement. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success on this day, the 18th of December, 2024, at the state Capitol, Hartford, Connecticut.
Thank you. And Wendy, if you could come forward, please. Wendy, we'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation to recognize your 14 years of service as the Registrar of Voters. So thank you very much on behalf of the Clinton community. Some flowers for you.
Once again, it's from the state of Connecticut, you can recite it yourself now. The Connecticut General Assembly official citation, introduced by Representative Kristiana Scovitch, 35th District, and Senator Norm Needleman, 33rd District. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Wendy McDermott in recognition of serving as the Republican Registrar of Voters for the Town of Clinton, your selfless dedication to the town and its citizens helped Clinton's government operate smoothly and efficiently. We are grateful for your many years of service and wish you much success and happiness upon retirement. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success, given this, given this 18th day of December, 2024, at the state Capitol, Hartford, Connecticut.
Thank you. Thank you.
Whoa, you have to stay for the meeting, it's gonna be great.
My flower's gotta be in the water.
There you go, good excuse. Good job.
There you go.
Fast on your feet, as always.
Okay, moving on to item number five, can I, we're gonna have the approval of the minutes from December 4th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, motion carries. Moving on to item number six, we're gonna have three different appointments. We're gonna start with Alan Murphy, Republican for the Shellfish Commission for a term until 6:30 25. Is Mr. Murphy available today? Would you like to come up here and say a few words about why you would be interested in joining the Shellfish Commission?
Well, I started on one of my clamming expeditions about 18 months ago, I ran into one of the commissioners, and we had a brief discussion that they were having a meeting that night, and I could attend, and I just kinda said, okay. And since then, I've been to almost every meeting, 18 months. But getting a pulse on what they did, how they did things, I was very impressed. I was impressed by their knowledge, by their tenacity, their, their, their drive, and then finding out that this is more than just about clams. It's about the waters right there, and I was really starting to turn myself into an environmentalist, I guess, just believing that this is a good thing for everybody, just having this commission, I mean, who has no really bite or oversee just clams, but you have a pulse on what the water's like out there, and what we can do maybe to make it a little better, and help. Clams do generate, you know, better water, oysters. So meeting with these guys and working with these guys, I've done stocking and water samples, did the running down to Milford, samples, and, you know, scientists change. I've been with these fellows for 18 months, and I like what I see. I like the group. I think the Town of Clinton should be glad they have these guys. This commission, they're, they're all very intelligent and very driven to produce, you know, a better, better water out there. And, I don't know, I just thought my 45 years of being a carpenter, I've developed some life skills that could maybe help there, you know, we do hands-on kind of stuff, too. And, yeah, I didn't, I didn't come down here to, in the Connecticut shoreline, I moved down here about eight years ago, but I didn't come down here to be a commissioner of any sort of, I didn't even know what I'm getting into. It kinda just, why do you wanna be commissioner? I don't know, I just like what I see.
Okay, well, that, that is one of the better explanations that we've got in a long time, that's very good. Does anybody have any questions, or? Okay, so can I have a motion to nominate Alan Murphy as part of the Shellfish Commission for a term until 6:30 25?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Welcome. So, yeah. Welcome to the group, so when, do they have to sign in?
Sworn in.
Sworn in. Sworn in. You have to get sworn in at?
The Town Clerk's Office, between 9:00 and 4:00, you can go up to the Town Clerk's Office and get sworn in officially.
I need a clamming permit, too.
Don't tell the chief. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Welcome. Okay, so next, we have Tessa Gabauer, Human Service Advisory Board Student Member. Tessa, don't worry, you don't have to do that good of a job, but do you want, you wanna say a couple words as to why you would like to be part of that group?
Yeah, I just wanna help with the well-being of the youth as I see it firsthand in schools, and I think I'd provide like a unique perspective that I can raise to meetings.
Okay.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Welcome, Tessa. So third is Mary Young, Republican for the Economic Development Commission for a term until 6:30 25. Mary, would you like to say a few words as to why you would like to join that group?
My name is Mary Young, I have degrees in economics and finance, I've had roughly a 40-year career advising companies in financing and corporate growth, and I was in Boston, and I moved to Clinton in 2018, and since I moved to Clinton, I've been observing, I've had the chance to observe the businesses come and go, and some of the things that are happening, some of the things that are not happening. I've been interested in economic growth for a while, so when this seat opened up, I just decided to jump in and give it a try.
Any questions for, for her? No? Okay, so can I get a motion to nominate Mary Young, Economic Development Commission for a term until 6:30 2025? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to item number seven, Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Project Scope Discussion for Sidewalk Improvements between John Street Extension and North High Street. And we have Mary, that is going...
Abby.
Abby, I'm sorry, Abby, that's going to talk, tell us a little bit more about that.
Sorry, Abby.
So for anybody who doesn't know me, my name is Abby Pierceall, I am the Town Planner for Clinton, so thank you for having me here to plug the sidewalk project a little bit tonight, and you can certainly, if you've got questions, let me know. We distributed a quick memo to you, giving you a quick, a summary of what the ask is and really where we need council to say yea or nay on the next steps for this project. So as you may recall, we had, the council had previously approved the application for and participation in the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is federal dollars that come into the town for transportation sidewalk improvements, essentially creating a sidewalk network at essentially 80 cents of the dollar. The federal government and through the state of Connecticut pays 80%, the town pays 20%. We had originally settled on a scope of work that included the north side of Route 1 from CBS down to just past the bottle shop. That is sort of the original scope with a crossing around Grove Street, as the state is gonna require that we put that in. And so they took sort of the original discussion that we had, said this is what you have to do to participate, and so this is the, that original piece. What I provided to the group was another sort of image that shows a potential area where the state DOT, as part of the review for this project, has essentially said, look, we think it makes logical sense to expand this project to also include the south side of the road. So that would be from the intersection at Stevens, right across from CBS, all the way through to just across the, or, sorry, just to the Grove Street intersection, and then wrapping around the corner south on Grove Street to connect to the small sidewalk that's already there. So this is, so essentially what they're asking for is the council's endorsement to expand the scope of the project at this stage. There's a couple important things to consider here, so transportation alternative program projects run through sort of key milestones along the way, and the first key milestone was to get to the point where we said, yes, we'll participate, select a consultant, which we have, Michelle signed me, we do a competitive process, we're signed on with BL Companies for the design services and construction oversight when we get there, and right now, the phase that we are in is a scope negotiation. So that's why we're asking you the question, we need to settle on the scope for the project. Once the scope is settled, then we negotiate a design fee that we will pay to BL out of the monies that we have set aside, the 1.4 that you had previously approved, and then from there, we say with this scope, we want you to advance to 30% project design. That 30% project design is kind of our key point to say, do we go forward with full construction? Do we do a portion of the project? How do we move this thing the way forward? So we know that we've committed to the north side of the road, we have an opportunity to get to 30% design, have real dollar project costs and anticipated numbers to make a decision at 30% design about whether or not you wanna move forward with full construction on both sides of the road, so we'll have a better sense of what the dollars are. Right now, we're kind of guessing. And so the idea here is that if we were to expand the scope now and allow Michelle to enter into an agreement for the actual design services to get us through 30%, you'll have another bite of the apple when you know more. 30% is where we hold public meetings, we discuss the project costs and say yea or nay on the full expanded scope if you choose to go forward tonight. A couple of things about it, too, for me, you know, when I was first going out and walking this section of sidewalks, March, or like a couple months after I first got here, I was doing the project analysis and walking downtown on the north side of the road, I took pictures of the south side of the road because it felt unsafe to walk there. You know, there's certain crossings, you know, that North High Street pedestrian crossing, the little cow path between the Matt Kate Apartments and the gas station, there are key places where people, people are traveling, they are going, and there is a demand for them to be there, but there's really not safe pedestrian access. Given the proximity to the rail station, to downtown, to connecting that network, to closing this loop and bringing it back down Grove Street, down to the water, it's really an opportunity to say, let's circle in on our pedestrian network and really sort of make some improvements here. And for 20 cents of the dollar, it seems to make some sense. I obviously don't have control of the money, that is yours, and certainly, you know, defer to your decisions on that, but it's an opportunity, and we wanted to make sure that we brought it to you for a decision so that we don't miss the chance to have the conversation in the future of do we go forward to construction or not. So that's, that's it, that's sort of where we're at. One thing to keep in mind, if we get to 30%, if we say yes, we're going forward, that 30% time, from the time that we say yes, we have to commit to carry it through to construction, otherwise we pay the whole thing back. So it's really important to, if we make a decision, we need to know what real numbers are, and so the, you know, right now, we just, we didn't wanna sort of shoot from the hip and say, we think it's gonna be about X number of dollars, 30% gets us better inspiration. So, and then again, if we didn't go forward with that south side at that time, we at least have 30% design that we can advance in the future. So, you know, it's not like we're getting nothing out of it, we're getting a start of a project, even if we didn't complete the entire thing. So it's something to consider, I can answer questions and, and, you know...
So what, what exactly is the decision you need from us tonight?
So the, the thing that we're asking for is your vote to agree to the scope expansion at this time to allow the project to advance to 30% design, and to authorize Michelle to enter into a design services contract with BL to move forward.
So if, if we didn't, if we weren't going to the other side of, of the, with the other sidewalk, we would still need to advance to 30%, right? I'm just not following, so, like, if, if we would normally need to go to 30%, and then we're gonna find real numbers and vote, so we have to do that anyway. The difference, when you add the other sidewalk, what does that change?
Ultimately, the project costs will increase. So your, so of the design fees in this 30% phase, it will increase by 20% of negotiated fee, when I talked about the scope define, helps us define what the negotiated fee is, so what happens at the next stage of these projects, and they're a little wonky, it's a little bit different from other projects that we've done. Once the scope of work is finalized, there's a negotiation that happens through the state to say, BL Companies puts a man-hour estimate together, the Town puts a man-hour estimate together, they come together and we negotiate with the state's consulting firm to say, this is the agreed-upon number of hours we believe it will take you to complete this scope of work. And so at, at that point, we agree on a fee and then enter into the actual agreement for design services. So that happens as, as part of, as part of this next stage. That scope is gonna define how many hours it takes and what that fee is from the, from the design consultant. So whether they're only designing the north side of the road, or designing the south, and south, will change what that, the number of hours it will take them to do that work.
So, so the construction is, we last estimated just to do the north side a million four.
Correct.
And, and now we're talking about the cost of the design services, is that right?
Right, so the, the design services were always a part of this project, right? So, so we were always going to be on the hook for 20% of design, no matter how that played out. The 1.4 is sort of our revolving bucket to say, we believe the project is gonna be about this much, this is what we're pulling out of in order to be reimbursed. So at each stage of the project, we pay, and then we get reimbursed the 80%, and then we have our pot of money, and we pay, and we reimburse the 80%.
What is the 30%, that's 30% of the design is complete, or 30% of the construction?
30% of design, yeah. So we don't, we don't advance to construction until we go through the whole, there's a project authorization that has to happen through the state and through the town in order to go forward for construction.
So is the design materially more if you do the other side of the street? I mean, it's gonna take more hours because you have to design more.
It'll, it'll take more hours, it shouldn't be substantially more, you know, they're still gonna have to go through and do the survey on that side of the road, to do all the research on, you know, the property ownership and all that kind of stuff. So it could, I mean, it could effectively, you know, be another 50 to 70% increase in, in that number. I don't know what the number is yet because we haven't, we haven't negotiated, so I don't have a particular dollar yet.
And, and if, and it's scalable, so if we chose not to use it and just stay with the north side?
Right, if you said no right now, we would only, we would only be able to pursue with the north side, we would go back to the state, the DOT, and say, no, the Town Council's not comfortable with the sudden movement of expanding the project, we only want this one side.
But if we say yes, and then we design for both sides, then when it goes to construction, we could choose to only do one side.
Right, when not, when it, so when it gets to 30% design, that's your point, to make the decision. If you say yes to 30%, you're committed from that point forward to carry it through construction on both sides. So it's important that you know coming...
Let me, to make myself clear, so we haven't paid any design fees yet for the north side yet?
We've paid nothing yet.
Do we have an idea how much the design fees are gonna be, out of that 1.4 million, what percentage of that is it, design?
Somewhere in the 250 range, and that, and that's what the state's estimating, whether or not that is, is what we, you know, kind of come to.
That was for the north side only?
Correct.
Was 250,000?
And that was not, that was not a 30% design, that was for the consulting services throughout the scope of the project.
So we've allocated 1.4 to do the north sidewalks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so now, if we go to the south, then it's gonna cost more money to get to design, out of that 1.4.
Correct.
Okay, so then if we decide not to go to south side, we're then at some point gonna have to allocate more money?
Yes.
Into the 1.4 bucket?
Depending on where the numbers come out.
Well, I mean, regardless, because...
The construction costs will only go up, right?
We're increasing our design costs, so our design costs are going to increase to the south side, which means that 1.4 will be decreasing, so at some point, we will need to find additional funding somewhere, because we've allocated this...
But it gets reimbursed from...
80% of it.
But we talked about this...
Overall, all the numbers are up.
Right, but the rebate, or the amount of money that we're gonna get back from the state of Connecticut for a sidewalk project, it, I mean, it's gonna be five years. So for us to sit here and think that we're gonna get our recoup of money from the state at that, for the 1.4 that we're building, it's gonna take a lot longer. So the issue becomes that we are going to have to allocate more additional money if we go to the south side. We used ARPA funding, correct? That's what we used, we used ARPA funding for the, for the, for the north side, and at which point, you know, we're gonna need to then come up with whatever amount of million it would cost in order to do the south side, just so I'm clear.
Yes, you, yeah, your numbers will, will not go down, right? That, that shouldn't be, you know, I don't wanna have any, any blinders on about that. And I think the question is, is it, is it worth, is it worth the council's time and funding now to get to the 30% and know more about what those numbers are and make the decision to 30%, or is it not something that you're willing to make it to at this time? That's what it is.
Let me, I'm, I'm a little puzzled now, because you said we used ARPA money. I don't believe we used ARPA for that sidewalk.
I don't think so.
We took 1.4 from...
Capital Improvement?
From Capital Improvement. Because remember, we said, which surprised me, that ties up 1.4 million dollars of our undesignated, remember?
Yeah, yeah.
So if we go further with a bigger project, that is more money that we will be tying up out of our undesignated surplus, until we get it.
Back.
That, that's right.
Till you get it back.
And, like you said, it could be four, it could be five years. So I remember that after we found out about how the impact of the north side was to that, that maybe some of us, you know, would have thought differently about going into that project, so, well, I'm, I said...
And so, and logically, just lie, without going into numbers... And so, and logically, just without going into numbers, logically, if you're taking the same north side and basically the same area on the south side, it's, it's going to come close to doubling the project?
It could.
So we could be asking for another 1.4 million.
But I mean, the longer the project goes too, the longer it's going to cost.
Right.
And five.
The more we extend it out. Five years later, you get 80% of it back.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not necessarily that the entire number is at the five-year piece, but there is, you'll have your initial design piece, they submit, we get a little bit back, but that's a smaller number. And then, I mean, the time of these that takes the longest is typically if there are any right-of-way negotiations that have to happen, those are the ones that typically tie things up. On the north side, so far, the consultant hasn't identified more than a couple that they are perhaps thinking may, may need to happen. The south side may be different. We don't know that yet. And so, so again, this is, this is, there is a, there is not, you know, it's a lower financial commitment right now to get to some better numbers in 30% design to advance this connectivity and try to sort of invest in this section of downtown, but it doesn't come without very clear project cost increases and decisions to make in the near future.
It's got to be cheaper if they're already out there doing the north side while they're there to do the south side, to go do it, go away and then come back again. But we don't know the numbers, right?
And the other, the other thing that's probably a factor here is they don't always, DOT doesn't always come here and offer that, offer to pay 80%. So that, this offer might not ever happen again.
And we're talking about sidewalks on Route 1 on Main Street in the center of town. It's not out in the woods, right?
And the safety component and that the DOT has identified it on their own as a safety concern and for this pedestrian option. So it wasn't, it was something that they observed in the process and think that they're willing to put their money up to improve that stretch.
I mean, I don't think anybody's ever denied we need sidewalks. I mean, I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue for us as a council is, safety issue, yes, we need it. Bottom line is, how are we going to pay for it? You know, because we need to, it's going, that's going to come into play a big factor. So I mean, that's all, we're going to be committing money that, you know, at some point, and whether we do, and even if we don't do south side, but we do the north side, but we go to the 30%, we're still at some point going to have to come up with some, probably some more money.
Yeah. Hundreds of thousands.
That's all it is. I mean, I'm not against sidewalks. I just want to make sure that we understand when we get into this, it's going to cost. You know, we, there was a capital improvement project on our, for the first 1.4. It'll be, continue to be a capital improvement at, for whatever else is left. So that's going to be a project that's going to encumber a lot of the monies that we have available, knowing that we went to 20% recently on our.
But some of the, when we did developments on Route 1, like Milano, did they put their own sidewalk in?
Yeah. Normally, sometimes when they get approved, that's going to be, that'll be a part of their approval from the state because it's a state road. So. That's the problem.
Sort of run risk of this piecemeal sort of sidewalk network versus one, and then, you know, again, trying to sort of say, listen, the town is going to take the lead in this core area of sidewalks. But again, it's, it's what you are comfortable committing to at this stage. You know, the sidewalk, my understanding going from the other side, the estimates were much higher than the actual numbers bid out as. So there was, it does happen where this construction costs are lower. We're looking out into the future. I can't predict what that's going to be, so I don't want to pretend that we have definitive numbers for you or that, you know, we can give you a sure thing. What this decision tonight would be, would be authorization to go back to the state and say, yes, we want to include in the scope of work for the design consultant, this whole area, so we know exactly what we're dealing with when it's time to have the public hearing and meeting and make the decision about whether to go forward. And so the question is, are you willing to commit the additional design dollars at this stage in order to get those numbers to make decisions for the next?
So how, if we do spend a couple hundred thousand on a design on the south side and then decide not to do sidewalks right away and we wait till we have money a year or two later, how long before the design gets stale and they have to do it again?
I mean, it doesn't really go stale unless it's the state wants to change their standards, which I don't contemplate seeing, you know, happen any, anytime soon. The issue is, so at that 30% mark, that's where you're making your decision. So if you say yes to 30%, at 30%, you say, okay, we see the numbers, we want this project to proceed, your next milestones are 60, 90%, bid it out, yeah, 200, bid it out and construct. And you are saying that the town at that stage is committed. Once you go past 30%, you are committed to the full construction cost on both sides. So you would have to make a decision at that 30%. I don't think you're going to be spending another, another hundred thousand dollars on design services for the 30% of the south side. You wouldn't proceed to further design past 30% of the south side.
There's a delay on getting the funding. Is there a risk that we don't get it at all?
There's no guarantee that you can go back to the state in three years from now and say, we're ready now.
But I mean, if we spent the money and then we spent 2.8 million and said, okay, where's our 80%? And they went, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, you're going to get it. They can't, they're not.
The refund's always, you're going to get.
It's just a matter of time.
It's just time, no, right.
That's all it is.
But you can't do the design phase now and say, okay, well, we're going to sit on this for three years until we, you know, have another project come to completion and then decide, oh, go to the state, we were ready now. It's got to be on their timeline to do it.
It's funny because I always thought in the beginning that the south side was worse than the north side. I don't know why we even, you know, how the state gave us the money and the thing, oh, do the north side. I always looked at the south side was, is the really bad side.
So right now.
Can we just do the south side and not the north side to begin with? No.
So right, so right now, you're asking for maybe another 100,000 or 200,000 to move forward with the design stage to, to get us up to that 30%.
So I'm not asking for a particular dollar amount. What I'm asking for is to say yes to the scope so that we can enter into the scope that the man-hour design fee, so we know what that fee is going to be and to say that Michelle can go into the agreement for that, to say that, yes, we're going to go forward to 30% on the whole thing. Those design fees would come out of the 1.4 you've already allocated.
You can pull from the same bucket.
Right, but it's.
But it's just, yes, Chris.
Right. It's going to be additional money.
She doesn't want to put a dollar amount because she doesn't know.
I just, I just don't know what it's going to be. We could have said 1.4 and, and let's say we only went with the north side and it came in lower than that and we got to bid similar to the other sidewalk, you may not be putting in that much more money or it could be significantly higher. We just don't have the numbers for you. And we can't get there without the design going to that phase.
All right.
To get some numbers.
So let me just, so what are you guys thinking? Are we in support of this?
Our commitment is to get to that 30% mark and then, of the design fees, not of the entire thing.
Correct.
And then make the decision. And that gives us the opportunity to take advantage of the 80% reimbursement, be it five years from now or whatever, that may not come down the line. Correct?
Right. So the, right, the consultant for, the VHB, the consulting firm that works for DFC, and they have been very clear that 30%, that's our, that's our sort of break point, where we say we're going forward or we're not. And once we go forward, we're saying, we're going forward regardless of cost. We will find the town match. The state will continue to contribute their 80%, but we will contribute 20% of whatever those construction fees are and go down the path for whatever time period it takes to get that money back.
On a timeline, do you have an idea when that 30% might happen?
So we would do another month or so of negotiations and then we would jump into 30% probably before summer.
So we'd be looking at it again before summer.
So I would, I would think we'd be back, there would be a public meeting that gets held. So there's, there's discussion with the property owners, there's an entire, you know, sort of public element of this that has to happen. You get to hear from folks in the community about how folks do or do not want to proceed and then you make the decision on how to go forward.
In the meantime, we've already subjected an extra 50,000 to 100,000 dollars in design fees.
Correct. So worst case scenario, you get 80% of your design cost back for 30% of mine.
Coming out of the 1.4.
It's still coming out of that.
Coming out of the 1.4.
Right. But you're, you're just cutting the bucket down because you're adding this, you're changing the scope of the design fees to include the south side.
Right.
So there'll be an increase in, in.
Later.
There. It's going to come from the same bucket.
If, if the 1.4 was right.
Right. Correct. If it's right, but in today's construction costs where, you know, timelines it moves down. But we do have the option to not, to choose not to do the south side at some point.
Basically committing to finding out what it's going to cost.
Right. We're, we're committing the engineering work.
That's it.
And then the scope.
If we don't commit and we don't go with the south side, we will then have to allocate more to do north.
Right.
Whatever that number is.
So we take a vote? All right. Why don't we just take a vote? So who, who's in favor?
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Oh, can someone make a motion to authorize us to, to. To allow Michelle, oh, is it right here? Oh, here it is. No. Nope. So can we make a motion to allow Michelle to enter into contract to add the south side?
Design scope.
The south side to the design scope.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, all right. So now we are going to move on to number eight, the Board of Education non-lapsing account. I believe Mary Ann is here to talk to us a little bit more about that.
Good evening. Obviously, I'm Erica Gelton and I'm the chairperson of this Board of Education. And we are here to convey the board's request to allow us to access some of the money that we put into our non-lapsing account, which we can use for capital expenses and unforeseen special education costs. So we've had two things happen since pretty much the inception of the school year, would you say? The first is that we have identified our, our camera system at the high school has sustained some damage due to events outside of our control. And so as, in an attempt to try to address that safety concern, our illustrious tech staff has come up with kind of a better, more reliable way for us to provide that, that safety feature for our, on our Morgan campus. So the proposed redesign and upgrade to that, to the security camera system at Morgan will be $39,778. Additionally, and this is why I cannot go into the tech world at all, we've also, were notified that the phone, our phone systems at the high school are now not going to be, it's kind of like end of life, like they're just not going to be serviced, they can't be replaced, they can't, which is obviously an unsustainable situation for our high school. So the cost to upgrade the phones at Morgan will be 28,534. So on December 2nd, the board considered all of these realities, considered the monies that we need to be able to maintain our commitment to safe and technologically forward-thinking campuses. And we, the board approved a motion to authorize myself and Mary Ann O'Donnell, our superintendent, to formally request access to the non-lapsing fund account as presented for the, with the total cost for the two projects as being $68,312. So we're, we can answer any questions, we can, but we would greatly appreciate if you would consider our request to be able to, not to exceed that money.
How much do you have in the non-lapsing fund now?
It's on the town side. I believe it's close to $800,000 at this point, but Bob's not here tonight, so I don't have that exact number.
How long have you had the non-lapsing fund? Is that?
We don't have a number of what's in the account?
Well, it's a town account.
So I believe, I don't have the exact number. Bob is in here, but we did put in 300 and I think it was 50,000 at the end of last fiscal year in.
Right. And by my figures, that adds to the previous balance, which was 206. So we have about 556,000, not 800. That's the first correction. My second comment is this, I'm going to be honest with you. The security camera system, why isn't that just in your, this year's, a presentation for your capital expenditure?
So it can be. It absolutely can be. And that was the consideration of the Building and Grounds Subcommittee. Jack Sherbin and Erica are both on that committee, as is Frank. It's also been discussion with our School Crisis Advisory Board Committee, which involves our first responders, including the chief. And we have some vulnerability in the surveillance and ability for first responders to access those cameras generally or in a crisis. And the decision was made that we don't feel comfortable waiting until the capital expenditure in July to make that change. We have had this issue. We have fixed and repaired it at different points throughout time since the building opened. And at this point in time, the decision was made with the groups and the Board of Ed's consideration that waiting was not something that we felt comfortable doing based on school security.
Because quite frankly, this is just, my personal opinion, this is just circumventing the budget process of capital expenditures. That lapsing thing, we created that account, first of all, to protect us against special ed, special needs drop off real quick. All of a sudden, two or three added children get added to our program here and it puts a big expense on yourself. So I was always the sponsor of that. And then, of course, it's set for emergency type of capital. Well, you know, this security camera system evidently is not something new. It's evidently been having this problem. And I don't understand why this wasn't brought up to us before. Maybe we could have took it out of other funds or some. I just don't like the system. I, I'm not against the project. I understand that we have to do the, the cameras or we should be doing them. I just don't like the way it's being done. I don't like the way this is sort of circumventing the capital projects.
So let me, let me just explain a little bit more. So on the camera, the cameras, the consideration in our meeting was to put it into the capital for next year. And that was a decision with our Board of Ed members at that subcommittee, along with our School Crisis Advisory Board with our first responders, a very, a discomfort, and I can let both board members speak to that, and I have the same discomfort of delaying something of this nature. Because at this point in time, right, those, that system is not operational in a way that the police could respond if we had an incident at Morgan. And, and that was a decision that elevates it to an emergency decision rather than waiting six months. We can wait and, and we can do that, but I can tell you right now, we don't have the capacity to repair, to do what we need to do to make them operational. So that's why this request is here at this time. The second request I'd like to talk a little bit more about. So that was a notification to Frank Rossi, our tech director, that as of December 31st, they are no longer making the equipment, the hardware equipment for our phone system. So if we don't, that's why we're here tonight. If we don't place that order before December 31st, that piece of equipment won't be available 31st, that piece of equipment won't be available to us. And that's a choice that the-
Although, I will say, you were notified in July that the phone systems and the product lifecycle for the phone was coming.
And we planned for it in capital.
That's okay, I've said my piece, and I just throw it out there, I know it's on deaf ears, and I just wanted to put my personal Dennis Donovan opinion on it, that we have policy, and we try to set up things, and right after Bob, we start circumventing. No, that's okay, that's okay. I'll ask Mary Ann, I understand your position.
Sure, and that's why we're here, right? That account is controlled by the Town Council, which is why we're here. The Board of Ed felt and voted unanimously that this, these were two emergent things that they thought applied to the policy that's set for that. I understand where you're coming from, Dennis. We do great planning, my department does that, my tech department, and these are two things that we felt couldn't wait. That's why we're here tonight, and that's why we're making the request. The second piece, though, I do want to add, right, is you mentioned, the other side of this non-lapsing account is for special education potential overruns. And you know that last year, you remember, we came down here because we were very concerned. Well, I'm going to tell you, we're very concerned again, and in fact, we're in a worse position than we were last year. So we are managing that right now, but I can't say that in the next two months that I might need to come down and have that conversation with you.
I wouldn't have a problem.
And I'm just, I'm letting everybody know that, that that is what we're struggling with. So this is a transparent process, we're sharing where we are.
Not to interrupt, one more comment. I just can't believe all these things went on our latest building that we put up, the brand-new high school that opened in 217? And all of a sudden, all the equipment at that high school is no good. I just, that's just another comment coming off my head, that, you know, we've had Joel and old Glenwood, they've got all the equipment, it's all working, everything's fine, brand-new high school, we're having all the problems.
Well, we've, we actually, if I can turn it over to Frank, we actually replaced that equipment.
So we've had, since the high school was built, it's not really a problem with the equipment as so much as with the original design. Since the high school was built, we'd had three different weather events, lightning strikes that have disrupted cameras and the power systems on the poles where all of the cameras are located, or the poles where the antennas that wirelessly communicate to those cameras are connected. So we've had, we've had it, we've had it replaced, like I said, we've, on two, the two previous occasions, we've had it repaired, we've invested money in fixing and replacing the necessary needs. After this third one, we went back and revisited it, and we looked at, we sought advice from our consultants, and we revisited the original design to try to come up with a better way to avoid a lightning strike taking out our camera systems.
Can you talk about phones?
Sure. And when we were first notified in the spring about the phones, we originally, I originally put it into the capital plan for next year, right about the time the school year was started, NEC, the manufacturer, it's not really dealing with our vendor, the manufacturer came back to us and said, this one particular piece that we need at Morgan to bring Morgan up to, Morgan's a year older than the rest of the district. So we need to bring Morgan sort of on par, the hardware on par with everything else, in order to maintain these upgrades that NEC will carry through 2030. We were informed, so we originally planned it in capital, and we said, okay, this makes complete sense, we thought we had time. We were informed late summer, right around the start of the school year, that NEC wouldn't be distribute, would no longer distribute that particular piece of hardware come December 31st. So that changed our whole approach. Part of the project, part of the upgrade project, still is in capital for, to bring the other two schools to where it needs in order to maintain the service that we need through 2030, when NEC is completely pulling the plug on that system.
Thank you. I just want to let you know that if I had money in the contingency fund, which unfortunately we don't have, because we had to use it for other things this year of a lot of importance, I would have suggested tonight taking it out of there rather than this lapsing fund. I do not want this lapsing fund to become-
I agree with you. I 100% agree with you, Dennis. No, and-
Thank you for your answers, I appreciate your candid. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to read a suggested motion that the Town, that the Town Council authorized the Board of Education to access the non-lapsing account funds for operating expenses associated with unanticipated capital costs related to Morgan cameras and phones as presented by the Board of Education in the amount of $68,312. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam-
Yes.
Town manager?
Yes.
Could we get an update?
Right here. Actual balance of non-lapsing account. Is that what you want, right?
Yeah, I like that. Just so we know.
It's on my list, I will have it for you.
I just saw a little notation on mine that we, somewhere along the line, maybe being here, has it in, we took $39,993 earlier in the year-
Black book.
For something.
I'm not aware of that from-
Yeah, well-
Dennis, part of the balance too, and so I am anxious for Bob to share that, but last year, we did look on asking for the potential, and then we didn't use it.
Okay, whatever, maybe that figure was on the potential side of the board.
We do need to, we need that for Bob to tell us exactly how much is in there.
You will get an email this evening.
All right.
All right, we'll move to 8A. The, the, let's see, the installation of the Flock ALPR Falcon sites, we have Chief D'Amelio here to talk about that.
All right, so first of all, I will apologize for my voice, this is my gift from my son for going down to Florida for his graduation. Before I get into the Flock and accepting of the grant, hopefully that you'll approve, I just wanted to give you an update on our radio system, because we did tell you that we would give you updates on our radio system as we went along, and under new business, I think it fits here, we were able to, I want to personally thank the Council, Michelle and Bob for having that money properly allocated, because at the end of the year, Motorola wanted to close out their books with the sale. We were shovel-ready, and due to that fact that we had the money allocated for the project, we jumped ahead of five other departments in getting all of our subscriber units, so they were manufactured from the factory, and they've all shipped. Now they have to be programmed by NORCOM, but we are at least six to seven months ahead of where we should be, which greatly increases the safety of our officers and everyone in the community, because we're able to respond. This is an antiquated radio system, it's not been supported for a number of years now, so it was quite dangerous. So I want to thank you all for putting us in that position to be nimble and move quickly. So you've moved the project ahead very, very quickly. So I want to personally thank everybody on the Council for, you know, and Michelle and Bob for having that set up that way, because I truly appreciate it, and it's paid a huge dividend for us, public safety-wise. Second piece is the reason why we're here tonight, Captain Kane, who's only been with us for six weeks now, has been extremely diligent and busy in executing some of the things that we, I hoped he would do for us, which he's come through with flying colors, and that is to be, find ways to give us force multipliers. We're a small force, only 27 sworn officers, I know, our sitting population is only 15,000, but on a daily basis, we're policing upwards of 30,000 to 35,000 with all the crowds that come in and out of the mall. We do have I-95 coming through and Route 1, so it's a much larger population that we have to police with that small number of people. So we're always looking at ways to bring force multipliers to that. The emergent technology now is license plate readers and camera optics, which are widely used throughout the United States and widely used throughout the state of Connecticut. We've been working on trying to get those here as well, there was a cost associated with that, and I had other priorities, mainly being one, being the radio system that needed to be taken care of, other thing was fleet, you know, basic response things we needed, took precedent over that. But now, Captain Kane was, through his connection with the state police, remember that there was an ARPA allocation from the federal government to the state of Connecticut to the tune of $5.6 million, which was to be allocated for crime prevention measures to help stem a lot of the auto theft that was taking place throughout the state of Connecticut. And that really wasn't transmitted, but I think maybe was the kind of rough transition between the exit of Commissioner Ravella to Commissioner Higgins, that was not very, that wasn't a normal process, and it was very kind of shaky, so I think maybe something fell through the cracks there. But since it is ARPA funds, we all know that it has to be allocated by December 31st. And long story short, the Simon Properties has put in two Falcon sites in and out of their complex, which they have granted us access to. With that being said, the state also uses the Flock cameras for their, for all their sites on the highways, for all the major highways, so if you, you know, you sign in and you see all the traffic cams, those are Flock cameras as well, and we would have access to those networks. So the state has allocated us $70,000, which will give us six additional Flock sites on top of the two that are already at the mall, and the state is also going to, because we're going to put six in on our town roads and spots throughout the town, they are going to place two additional Falcon sites into their network at actually 63 northbound and next to 63 southbound. So they act as a force multiplier for us and really stems the tide, we can tie into every Flock camera throughout the state of Connecticut, and honestly, up and down the eastern seaboard. So when we have vehicles that we know are going to be entering the town to commit larcenies, break into cars, known criminals, that we immediately have alerts, we know exactly where those things are, and we can send our limited resources to try and prevent them from committing crimes here in Clinton. So what's nice about this is, if you decide to allow us to accept the grant money, we already have a contract with Flock, which will give us two years of service for those sites, have all those cameras installed free of charge, and it's basically a two-year trial period for us. We can see if it's really an effective tool, an effective use of our resources. So when it comes time to renew, after the money is spent, right now, it's $3,000 per site plus an administrative fee, so it's still not a huge amount of money, but it's about $30,000. But we would have two years of research to say, okay, this works or it doesn't work, and if we decide it doesn't work, we just walk away. So the town is not on, we have no fiscal obligation past acceptance of the funds to get us started here.
When the camera's on and a person has got a license plate, that's, is it automatic? It alerts you that someone came into town by that camera that's?
So basically, yeah, what happens is, there's a, there's a list that's put into the operating system, and it's flagged, so even if New Haven, say New Haven, there's a shooting in New Haven, they put that into the system, it'll ping wherever, any one of those cameras throughout the Flock system.
And one of them, I thought it said pants, do they move or are they stationary?
The Falcon ones are stationary, and the Condor site is-
Condor's just a camera, so it's just a camera that we could use from the police department, and it records, and so we can go back in time, if there's a crime that happens on that road, you'll be able to see.
How long's it save the-
Thirty days.
And can you view it live at the?
Yeah, so we strategically have located them through our highest areas of traffic, so with all the cameras at the mall, coming off the highway, and the six sites that we want to put in, we're pretty confident we'll get 85 to 95% of all the traffic moving through the town at one point or another.
They've already been very successful in the couple of weeks they've been at click and crossings, helping us apprehend truck lifters, and they work.
Yeah, within the first 48, first 48 hours, we had two, we had two apprehensions with one in custody arrest from use of the camera.
That we wouldn't have had.
That we wouldn't have had.
We definitely would not have had, we got it from the cameras.
And there is no cost to the town, there's no match, there's nothing.
For the next two years, but then after that, we have to pay for the subscription.
If you want, yeah, if we want to continue it, but there is no, there's no fiscal obligation for us to do that, so if we decide that it works, and I think it will, that would go into my operating budget under contract services for police department under the contract line item, but if it's decided that it doesn't work, we can walk away, so there's really no harm, no foul.
All right, I'll read a motion to authorize, Michelle, to authorize receipt of $70,000 for the advanced surveillance system. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good stuff.
We'll move on to item number nine, which is an ARPA update.
Okay, so Bob is not here this evening, but I wanted to just also tie into the Finance Director's report. You all received a copy of the Finance report, and there's also a report on the ARPA funds. If you have any specific questions regarding this Finance report, I would request that you email me the question, I will get it to Bob, and we will get you the answers. Again, he apologizes, his son was having his dissertation today. So regarding the ARPA funds, there is a chart which you, or spreadsheet which you've seen before, you can clearly see that all of the funds have been expended or obligated, so we've met the requirement put forward to us, and we are, won't be turning any funds back over to the state.
What happens if you have it obligated and then it doesn't come to fruition later? Do you have to give it back?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's, the expenditure deadline's two years out.
26, December 20, it has to be expended.
So you-
All the funds are accounted for and allocated.
Good job.
So I asked you this, but I'll ask you again here, so like for example, just for an example, the way that you got through and used all this money, so like behavioral health, how to balance, and we were talking about turning it over to paving or something along those lines, but you were able to get creative and obligate it through like-
Right, so one of the, one of the uses is for fuel and food for those in need through human services. So we were able to get contracts with local fuel propane companies for a certain dollar amount, and then as families need it, human services will contact them, and they will go down and deduct it from our credit. Same with food with Big Y and local shopping markets. So that it was allocated and under contract, and then we have those funds to draw down on.
Good. Any other questions on ARPA? That's good news, I'm glad to hear that. So the Finance Director's report, we're going to just skip over that?
Right, just skip over, and Bob will be here. Like I said, if you have any specific questions, feel free to email me.
Number 11 is the Town Manager's report.
Okay, originally, there was supposed to be a landfill update tonight, or landfill capping update tonight, but they're still waiting on approval from DEEP, so we're going to hold off on that until they have the approvals to come and give a presentation. There was, regarding the Harbor Master, Wayne Church's appointment was up, and they have, the state has appointed Rob Deary as the new Harbor Master. So that went into effect on the date of this letter is December 6th.
So he's the dock master and the Harbor Master?
Correct. Yes, one's a state-appointed position and one's a local paid position. We had interviews today for the WPPCC clerk, which is a part-time position, there was an offer extended, just waiting to finalize that, and once that is complete, I will let you know the person who has accepted the job and give you an update on that. And we have been in receipt of the Historic Documents Preservation Grant application for $5,500. So I signed that, which Sharon asked, and you authorized me to do so, we received that, and the paperwork went in. So that is what I have for you this evening.
Okay, moving on to number 12, Council Discussion. Anything, anybody? Okay, moving on to number 13, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Anything?
Nobody else? I'll just give my short report.
All right.
Is that the police meeting last week, everything's going fine. Thankfully, because of the fact that officers have come back to work and all, that the chief feels that as over time is now going to be under control, that's, you know, doable, and he has no, no problems thinking that they can get to the end of the year. I believe what the chief also said, let me see my notes there from the police, that we have a female officer that's almost ready to go online in duty, that she has passed her training rather well, and also that we have one young man up there at the academy that should be joining Clinton soon, but of course, he'll have to go through that six-month riding with other officers and stuff of that nature. And all in all, the police department has no major problems.
So that brings us to 29, or that that was in at 27 that you said?
No, we're still, we're sworn at 27. This one hire is over, the one that's in the academy, brings us to 28, but I will have retirements prior to him coming online, so we'll be back at our 27. It just takes forever, it's honestly, it's a year, by the time we, when we actually swear him in to the time they actually do their first shift, it's one year. The state of Connecticut has the most requirements of any state in the United States to receive your post-certification to be a police officer, and we're finding that the 10 weeks of FTO, so it's six months in the, six to seven months in the academy, plus a minimum 400 hours, which is 10 weeks of field training, being supervised by another officer, a field training officer. That 10 weeks now, with all the requirements on our officers, is even seeming to be a little bit short, so for everybody starts to be, we're all looking at expanding that to maybe 12 or 14, but it's a solid year before we actually get one actual shift out of all.
Thanks.
Yeah, planning and zoning, the plan of conservation and development, their website's up, they're seeking public input, so if you could share all of that wonderful information with any networks you have, the more information they get, the better. And at the last meeting, the developer for 151 East Main Street was there, they're going to break ground on, planning to break ground on their development in early 2025.
Anyone else?
That's it.
Okay, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session and include Mary, Michelle, and Carl. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, as we're out of executive session, I'd like to ask for a motion to add an item to the agenda to approve and allow Michelle to enter into agreement on the pilot agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, motion carries. So now that that's added to the agenda, I'll make a motion. Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to approve and allow Michelle to enter into the pilot agreement discussed by Carl.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Carl.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Very good.
Motion carries.